Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees, matters made confidential under the federal law FERPA, and collective negotiations under the Taylor Law for YAS and the YCTCTA.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Good evening, everyone, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a mo- led by our Mohansic students, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the sister of Patricia Donellen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the beautiful, with liberty and justice for all.
So that was like a hundred on the cute factor. So Dr. Hatter, how do we have Mohansic visiting today, right?
Yes, we do, and we have better than good news, we have great news this evening that our Mohansic students will be sharing with us. And before I turn the presentation over, I just wanted to acknowledge Chief Bob Noble is here. We have such a great partnership with the Yorktown Police Department, they're just such a terrific, terrific asset to us and a terrific partner, our relationship is incredible. And this year, we introduced school resource officers into each of our schools, which is a wonderful, wonderful addition to our school community beyond the obvious factors, but our school resource officers are part of the school community, the students are, have embraced them. We have school resource officers who coach sports for our, for our schools, who advise clubs, they are a part of the school community, just like any faculty or staff member would be. And tonight, we'll be giving a presentation on heroes, and we have one hero here with us tonight, and I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Antonella Dable.
Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Emmerling, Mrs. Sanfilippo, Mrs. Carbone, members of the Board of Education, parents, staff, and students. My name is Antonella Dable, I'm a second grade teacher and one of the teacher coordinators at Mohansic. I'm delighted to be here tonight with some of Mohansic students and their teachers as we honor our very own SRO Officer David and the positive and wonderful impact he has had on our school. To help me kick off the presentation, I'd like to introduce you to Riley Malone, one of our kindergarten friends.
Hi, my name is Riley Malone, and I am in Ms. Voatch's kindergarten class. What do you think of when you hear the word hero? Are you thinking a sandwich? A person with superpowers? Someone like a doctor, firefighter, or a police officer? A famous sports figure, writer, or artist? Did you know that not all heroes wear capes and a hero can be someone like me and you?
Hi, my name is Maggie McGovern, and I am in Mrs. Bowman's kindergarten class. In class, we read a book called A Hero. You, we learned that a hero isn't just somebody that is smart and strong, it is more about what is in a person's heart. Heroes care for people and can be brave and strong. Heroes can be good friends and help others in need. Heroes can fix broken things for what is right. Heroes try their best and find solutions to problems. Anyone can be a hero if they think of others and care about others, and tonight, one of our heroes i- is our SRO Officer David.
Hi, my name is Brielle Grillo, I am in Mrs. Guzano and Mrs. McCartney's first grade class. On the Friday before our winter break, we got to dress up as a hero, someone in our own life that helps and cares about us. It was a great way to show how much we appreciate the people that make a difference in our lives. Many people thought about a person that keeps us healthy, happy, and safe. Teachers and students dressed up as heroes, such as doctors, firefighters, vets, moms and dads, and even more.
Hi, my name is Bryce Segary, and I, I am in Mrs. Heinz's first grade class. Did you know that every week, we have a safety tip? Tuesday, Officer David shares tips, ways we can be a good citizen, ways we can be healthy, kind, and most importantly, ways we can be healthy and safe. Some tips he has shared are, always cover your mouth in those when you sneeze and cough. Always look forward when you are, when you are walking in the hallway. You don't want to trip and fall into anyone, especially on the stairs. Always wear your seatbelt on the bus and in the car.
Hi, my name is Eve Jackalone, and I am in Ms. Banks and Ms. Giorgio's second grade class. It is so great having an SRO at lunch and recess. Sometimes Officer David will sit with us and talk to us about our day. He makes sure that we all sit with friends and that he always is there to talk to if someone having a bad day or a good day, too. Did you know that Officer Davis is a lot like us? We know this because he enjoys spending time with us at recess. We play games, and he makes sure that we are playing fairly and that everyone is included.
Hi, my name is Dominic Eduardo, and I am in Mrs. Alditi's second grade class. Officer David has come into many classrooms to read the book Officer Buckle and Gloria by Peggy Rathman. This book is about Officer Buckle and his dog Gloria. At the beginning of the book, Officer Buckle goes to speak about school safety, but everyone falls asleep until Gloria, the dog, comes and entertains the students. This is a great story about friendship. Officer David then shared why he loves being in our school. We get to ask him about his job, his uniform, and even his police card. We learned about the equipment he uses, like his walkie-talkie. He is in, he is always in uniform, but a special part of our school family.
Hi, my name is Luca Cass, and I'm in Mrs. Longo's third grade class. As a school, we made a hero's sandwich for our very own SRO Officer David. February fifteenth was National SRO Day. We decided to make Officer David hero sandwiches, not a sandwich to eat, but one made out of paper. Each grade made a page of the sandwich, and then we put them together, making about twenty K through third grade level hero sandwiches. And then, and then we gave these to Officer David. We even decorated his office. Then on that Friday, sixteenth, we dressed up as any hero we wanted.
Hi, my name is Andy Dasek, and I am in Ms. Shine and Ms. Ferrari's third grade class. Tonight, we wanted to share all the parts of our hero sandwich. Let us tell you how we introduced our SRO. On this page, our kindergarten friends shared what Officer David looked like. Next, the first grader shared a slice of what he does as a school resource officer. Then we got to meet our SRO. The second grader shared what kind of a person an SRO needs to be, to be a good SRO. And finally, the part that made us feel happy, healthy, safe, smile, and say cheese was written by the, by third graders. They got to share why it is nice to have a SRO in our building, a complete sandwich filled with everything that makes Officer David great.
Thank you to all of our friends that presented here tonight. Officer David has been a great asset to our school, and we can't imagine what it would be like without him, because he gives so much to our students, staff, and school. And none of this great work would, would be possible without the support of our administration, our school board, the community, and our faculty and staff that are here tonight. And I'd like to recognize all of our faculty and staff from Mohansic that are here by asking them to just stand. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Berry to just come join us to say a few words to Officer David.
Thank you, Mrs. Dable, thank you. On behalf of our Mohansic family, we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share our students and staff and some of our work with you, and to recognize and celebrate our Officer David. We thank the Board of Education, Dr. Hatter, Chief Noble, for bringing SROs into our schools. Thank you again, parents, for sharing your beautiful children with us and for your continued support of our school and our district. I would like to invite Officer David to the podium to receive a small gift from the Mohansic PTA and his Mohansic school family.
You're invited to say a few words if you'd like, Officer David. He's very good with announcements and the microphone. Very good.
First of all, I just want to thank you all for coming out, thank the board, thank you Chief, everyone for coming out and supporting. You know, when I first took on this SRO, this SRO job, I just, I never knew what it would be and how it would affect me every day. I'd come home every day telling stories to my girlfriend about the different things that the kids do and the different things that the kids say, and it's just, it's just been amazing. And, you know, I couldn't have done it without the support of my Mohansic family over here, the staff, everybody welcomed me with open arms. And, you know, this is kind of a reflection of not only what I do, but, you know, my fellow SROs in the other schools, and it's something that, you know, we, we really drive in with the Yorktown Police Department, is just, you know, build relationships and make the experience for the kids, you know, just a wonderful one, whether it makes them feel safe and give them the best positive education that, you know, they can get. So I look forward to working with the rest of the Mohansic family to do that, so thank you all, I appreciate it.
This time, Chief Noble, I would like to invite you to the podium to say a few words as well, please.
All right, good evening, everybody, you can hear me? All right, we'll get you riled up for this evening, send you home happy to mom and dad. No, Dr. Hatter, President Carbone, members of the board, Deirdre as well, I mean, I remember you when you were principal at Brookside Elementary, so it goes without saying that this is a special night, Ms. Berry, God, I forgot your name already, Ms. Dable, that's it, that's it. Such a special night to, to honor somebody who's, this is his first year in the school, and to know that he's made a positive difference in the school, that's what we want, that's the goal. As Dr. Hatter said earlier, we do have a special relationship between our police department and your schools. And when I first took this chief's position in, in two thousand and sixteen, I pledged a commitment to the youth of this community and the senior citizens, everybody, really, but to really keep, you know, take close and special watch of our most vulnerable. And as these children, your children, have their journey through Yorktown schools, I'm proud, and I'm, I know Dr. Hatter's proud, that you'll have an SRO every step of the way. And they bring something a little different to each school, and they quickly become part of the culture and the fabric at that school. And they treat it as if it were their own. And you really, any, any officer that's, that's placed in those schools, I've got a, I've got a department full of great officers, I really do, from top to bottom, unmatched. And, but you got one of my best. And, you know, you continue, when you, when you go to a school and you see a school resource officer, there's the school and the officer, but that R in the middle, that resource part of the equation, that's what they're there for. And they build positive relationships every day. And, you know, I know they foster a sense of safety and security, but they also, they carry the flag for our agency to let you know, you parents, any opportunity you get, please speak to my officers, I think you'll come away pleasantly impressed. And for the children, I mean, that's what I want. I want these kids to be able to frame their own opinions and their own narratives about police officers. And we are blessed that both sides of town, this side and the other side on the north side, we've got officers in schools, and those children have every opportunity to build relationships with my police officers at a very young age. And, and Ms. Berry, anytime, I'll come in there and read to your children anytime you want, you offer standing, all right? And I'm an easy guy to find, you just ring me up and I'm easy, but, and I look forward to coming on a safety tip Tuesday, because I want to make sure that Officer David's making those safety tips the right, but you know what, I know you're all safe, all right? Because you got Officer David there with you, and he loves all of you, all right? So I thank you so much, again, if you need us, you call us anytime, day or night. Thank you again, Dr. Hatter, everybody on the school board for your support of our agency, and the people watching on television and also here tonight, you really do have an outstanding police department that works extremely well with, with the school, and that's a partnership you want as members of this community. Thank you very much.
So congratulations, Officer David, but this isn't, and if you know Officer David the way I think, I know Officer David, he views this as not just about him, this is about the entire department and a recognition of a great department, and it starts at the top with Chief Noble. I, I do want to take a moment to say thank you, parents. I enjoyed hearing the students say, when they gave examples of heroes, they said moms and dads, and that is so true, and that is so terrific, and always forget your first heroes are moms and dads. And parents, I know it's not easy to come out on a Monday night, you have all kinds of, whether it's work during the day, and you have all kinds of routines, and bedtime, and homework, and baths, and lunch to prep, and snacks to prep, it's not easy to come out on a Monday night, but you're here, and it's so important that you are here, and we thank you for that. That this partnership, we have a great partnership with the police department, we also have a great partnership with the families and parents here, and we appreciate you being here, because as a parent of young children, younger children myself, I get it, it's not easy to come out, middle of the week, or Monday or so early in the week, after all of the other responsibilities and the long days that you've had, so thank you for being here, and thank you for being your children's first teachers. To the other teachers that our students have and staff, thank you for being here. Again, you've had a long day, you have a long rest of the week ahead of you, and you're here, and I appreciate you, and there are so many of you here, I'd like to think it's because of the board meeting, but I think it's before Officer David, I think that's, I think that's the reality. But thank you all so much for your commitment to our students, know, know how we see you, how we value you and appreciate you. And finally, students, you were incredible, I was so impressed. And parents, I think you'll also agree that they stood up in front of a room full of essentially strangers, had the confidence to read in front of you and to speak in front of you, and we're talking about kindergarten students to third grade students. Contact, they, they, their reading was incredible, the eye contact was incredible, their confidence was incredible, and, and you see that now, imagine what the years ahead hold for us. So I am just so proud of the work our students are doing, day in and day out, you impressed me tonight, I, I just can't say enough about it, but what I will do is just, in the interest of brevity, I'll turn it over to Ms. Carbone.
And I think I have several board members that would like to say something, so I'm going to start with Mrs. Roll.
So to Officer David, thank you for making that look easy. You took on a big responsibility of keeping all of our Mohansic family safe, and you did it in a way that the kids are looking up to you, and don't think about maybe the real reason you might be there. So thank you for that. You know, when I think back when I was a kid, there's a couple of teachers that you remember really impacted your life, and I think you're going to be one of those people that these kids look back to, be like, wow, remember Officer David and what he did for me, so thank you.
Cheryl?
I think tonight, we closed the loop on a decision we made a year ago, and that was to put student resource officers in all of our schools. We started out at the top, and now we closed the loop and finished it off at the bottom for our youngest learners. What an amazing decision we made, and I'm so happy that this was the good news for tonight, because as a result of this decision, look at the relationships you have developed with all of our young learners. I mean, to pick you as, as their hero, it's just, it makes me feel so good that we made this decision, because we know we, without a doubt, we made the right one. But you are an example of what a true student resource officer is. You've developed relationships, you give safety tips, and now the children will identify with you and feel so safe, and not only with you, but for our wonderful police department in Yorktown. So thank you, really, from me, and I know you get so much thanks from Mohansic, but really, this, this tonight just makes me feel so good and so happy about what's going on in our, in all of our schools, but it's nice that it was highlighted at Mohansic, so thank you, Officer David.
Rashme?
Well, Officer David, we're so lucky to have you here, it's clear that students adore you, they look up to you, I, I see the photos of you being involved daily with them, so just, you know, I, I'm sure it brings them joy to see you in the building. Of course, we're glad that you are, you know, part of the more amazing side of town, and then part of, you know, the Yorktown family, and Chief Noble, your partnership has been invaluable over the years, so thank you for that. And students, great job speaking tonight, I can't wait to see some of the heroes that you made out the cards and, and read some of the things you had to say, but Officer David, but great job, good to see you all.
Mike?
Yeah, so the students, you, you guys were amazing tonight, really. I was totally impressed when even our first speaker kindergarteners came up and spoke as eloquently and as confident as you did, that was truly, truly amazing. I think Jackie said at the Pledge of Allegiance, the cuteness factor was like off the charts, and it got better every time, like every person, it just got better and better. And, and that's a true testament to you and your parents and, and your teachers, and obviously, you were all very excited that Officer David was here, and we can see why, as Cheryl mentioned, it was almost exactly a year ago that we sat up here and debated whether we could figure out how to get another two SROs into our budget, and thank you for making us look brilliant, because this is beyond what we could have ever imagined, honestly. So thank you very much for that, and thank you, Chief Noble, for the support that you always bring to the district and to the community, and for stepping up when we had questions and, you know, asked, how are we going to make this work, and you said, we'll figure it out, and you did, and you brought us some amazing individuals, so thank you all for that.
Catalina?
I want to thank you, being married to a police officer, I know how important your job is, and you're setting the foundation for these kids to feel safe, to know that you're funny, you play games, that they could come to you or anybody else, any other officer, and feel safe. But also to the teachers, because you guys really look like a family, everybody was smiling when he was speaking, so it just seems like an amazing partnership. And when Chief Noble said, do you feel safe, somebody screamed, yes, and it was, so they definitely, yes, you did. So everybody did such a great job speaking, thank you.
Pete?
I don't know what else I could say to, that my counterparts haven't said already, but to Ms. Berry, the, the staff, thank you for all you do with our children. Officer David, this, again, I, I sat here and listened to these words of these children, and, and you have a tremendous impact on, on our, our kids, on our community, on our families, so thank you, thank you very, very much. And children, I cannot be more impressed with how you speak and how you just got up there, and, and I know adults who don't speak as well as you do, so thank you, so thanks again.
Yeah, everybody said it brilliantly here, students, we are so impressed with you, you are amazing, and you're just going to get better. Staff, we, we are thankful for everything you've done, and for Chief and Officer David, you know, partnerships aren't easy, people talk about partnerships like they just happened, they don't, they take a lot of work, and we know the work that you put into helping us to form these partnerships, so we want to thank you, and same with staff, it, it's not an easy, it's constant work to make a partnership, so we thank you for the constant work, and we appreciate having you here, so thank you, thank you, Officer David.
So we're going to take a brief five-minute recess, we have a full meeting ahead of us, budget discussions and all kinds of good work that we're doing on behalf of the district, but we understand that there are bedtimes that are coming up, and there are considerations for tomorrow, so we'll take a quick five-minute recess, we'll ask that you depart during that time, if you'd like, if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay as well, but if you do choose to depart, have a great evening and thank you for joining us.
Good news as we have, but I don't think you're going to be able to top that one. They keep getting better and better, though, amazing. All right, so we are up to the first public comment, Yvette, did anybody sign up? No. So we're going to move right on to our superintendent's update.
Okay, this will be a pretty brief update, but I'd like to welcome two students who are working on scout merit badges in the audience today, and part of that process is to attend a, a meeting of, of a Board of Education, and so we'd like to welcome two students here this evening, good luck in your journey toward reaching Eagle Scout rank, that, that's, I know we have a parent of at least one Eagle Scout here on the board, and it's a tremendous, tremendous honor to reach that level. So what a great good news tonight, we had Mohansic here to honor Officer David, but it's so much more than just Mohansic honoring Officer David, we have five SROs, thanks to this board for their foresight and their commitment to the safety of your children, our students, in installing an SRO in each of our buildings. It was a very difficult decision during last budget season, and we reprioritized some of our needs, and obviously, safety will always be placed at the top of that priority list, and I thank the board for making that investment, and it was terrific to see, so often, we make investments, and you'll see presentations on programs that we install, or you'll hear about the results of some of the programs that we've implemented, but to see firsthand, and, and so quickly, I think Cheryl put it very well, that we made this decision, we sat at this dais in this room a year ago grappling with the decision, and to see the result of that decision in person, I think is quite rewarding, and not just for us, but I think for the larger school community. So we, we thank Mohansic for their presentation, but it was bigger than that, it was Yorktown Central School District recognizing all of our school resource officers. Just a couple of updates that I'll share with our community, we continue to be hard at work on the budget. I don't have a budget update for the board this evening, nothing has changed from the last presentation, the state has not finalized their budget, so we're still in some element of limbo here as we await the final numbers. We're hearing reports that there will be the Hold Harmless that's reinstituted, we're not certain at this time, so rather than speculate, we'll just await the final state budget, we hope that it will be delivered at some point this week, however, I, I also felt that way last week and the week prior. So we're, we're continuing to wait on an approved state budget, once we have that, we'll be sure to report back certainly to the board and to the community, as there are implications on our plans for next year and our planning for next year. This is a very lean budget, as we shared previously, there are no contingency teaching positions, so any added state aid, I would respectfully ask that the board consider that we look at adding a contingency position or two, depending on what comes forward from the state. We, we do get enrollment late spring, we do get enrollment over the summer, my first year, we had sixty-four new students come into the district, and the ability to pivot and adjust without and the ability to pivot and adjust without a contingency position is quite the challenge. So, I do hope that a budget is finalized. I do hope that it reflects an increase in state aid, or at least a flat state aid, and certainly not a reduction in aid. There are some other wonderful things happening at our high school. We're undergoing a Middle States accreditation review, so every seven years, we undergo this review process. It's a self-study, and then a visitation team from all over the country comes in to visit with us. They meet with the Middle States Committee that we've assembled, they'll meet with the administration, both school and district administrators, members of the Board of Education are representatives on that committee, and they meet with students and parents to hear more about Yorktown High School, the experience, the goals, aspirational and otherwise, and set a chart of course forward to realizing those goals. So, that's an exciting time for us. The review began today. It actually began unofficially last night, where we had dinner with the visiting team in the cafeteria of Yorktown High School. It was wonderful to meet people who had made the trip up from the Baltimore area, Philadelphia area. Just a terrific opportunity to connect with colleagues around the country to study what we're doing and our practices and our aspirations moving forward. Again, we have concert season, we had Banda Palooza, we've had so many other wonderful concerts. We're heading into concert season this spring. All of that information will be posted to our website. Athletics is well underway at this point. I encourage families, I know the weather has been a little iffy between the rain and otherwise, but I encourage any family to come out. Even if you don't have a child in the high school, I have encountered so many families who are making an afternoon out of just coming out to watch a softball game, or a lacrosse game, or a baseball game, or even a tennis match. I actually ran into a family at a tennis match who did not have children at the high school, but it's terrific to welcome you onto our campuses. We do ask two things. Number one, please leave your pets at home. I included that in a letter, I'll reiterate that point. Please leave pets at home. It's something that we're certainly cognizant of, and we do ask that you be respectful of that. And also, please monitor where you park on our campuses. There are reserved parking spots, they're signed, so we would just ask that you be respectful of the signage and the no pets on school district grounds during your stay. Other than that, come on out, enjoy, it's a great time of year, and once the weather does get consistently nicer, you'll see multiple events. So, please check our website, the athletic schedule is posted, the concert schedule is posted. Please do come on out, enjoy, support, it's free admission to all of the events, so I didn't mention that previously. There is no cost to attend any of the athletic events or any of the spring concerts that we have. That concludes the report that I wanted to share this evening.
Okay. So, we have our final budget discussion prior to hopefully adopting tonight. I don't know where to start. Pete, do you have anything you want to add, any questions, any concerns? Okay, Catalina?
No.
Mike?
Well, I guess at the last meeting, I raised the concern that we don't have a final state budget, and we were hoping to have that today. It's not going to happen, and it's been pushed off again, I think, until at least Thursday. So, um, the discussion that we had last time was around possibly extending our window to approve the budget to next Monday, but I don't have a lot of confidence that that's going to look any different. So, I'm, I mean, I'm happy to have the discussion, but I don't know that it's going to make a difference in my mind. I know there's some concerns, as Dr. Hatter pointed out, about the contingency positions. I mean, I guess we have some options there if we want to consider it, as far as adding contingency positions and how we can handle that. Perhaps we can talk about that, but other than that, I'm fine with it.
Rashme?
Yeah, I agree with what Mike said. I think the contingency positions does sound good, but we'll have to wait to hear back on the state aid, so yeah, nothing new for me.
Cheryl?
I would agree with what Mike said. I know that this was discussed last week about putting things off beyond tonight, but at this point, it doesn't seem like we have any confidence in getting the results of the state budgets, so I would support what Mike says.
Lisa?
Has there been any chatter, Lisa, about what we anticipate the budget will be in terms of, will it be in align with what we think we're doing tonight?
So, the last that I read was that the Hold Harmless piece is to be reinstated, but what used to come with Hold Harmless was an automatic 3% increase. They're not talking about the automatic 3% increase, but that no one would lose money, less make, get less foundation aid than they did for this current year. So, my thinking is that that is probably the worst-case scenario, that our foundation aid will be held flat. I think there's still the possibility that, based on some tweaking that they're still doing to the formula, we may end up with something more than what we have this current year. I really just have no idea what amount that would be.
So, what's the process? Let's say the budget comes in higher, we're anticipating more aid, or, you know, lower, and we get less than we're anticipating. What's the process then, after we've already adopted the budget?
So, there, we would have a couple of options. One is that we could leave our state aid number where it is and not change it, because as we know throughout the year, state aid is not just a function of foundation aid, but expense-driven aids, right? And those are still subject to fluctuation, so we could just leave it. If we've already adopted our budget, we could take less from fund balance, and we're appropriating now about $2 million in fund balance, so we could reduce that number, or we could look at the tax cap calculation. But that we would need, that has to be finalized by next Friday, so if we didn't have a budget by next Friday, that tax cap number would really be locked in.
So, would that require, if you have to redo things, would that require action by the board? Or is that something that you can do without us?
Um, no, it wouldn't require any action, because the number, if you do adopt a budget, you're adopting a number, right? A total number of expenditures, so that isn't going to change. The other half, the revenue side of the budget, would change. So, it would just be, are we adjusting our state aid number, our appropriated fund balance, or our tax levy number?
Okay, and if there's more money, you know, in terms of setting up the contingency teaching position, how does that, what's the process for that?
You mean more, I'm sorry.
If we get more aid than we were expecting? You can't put, we can't, we have to, we can't change the adopted budget. My concern is, I think we would probably want to put in the contingencies now, take the money from fund balance, and if we get more state aid, maybe put it back in fund balance, so at least we have those positions.
Can we do that later? Right, okay.
So, once we adopt the budget number, that's it. So, it might make sense to adopt the higher number now. If state aid materializes, that's great, that's our offset. If state aid doesn't materialize to cover those two contingencies, then we'll take from fund balance.
Makes sense, thank you.
It's just, it's very concerning, because they pulled one money already from different line items to fund a position in Brookside. I know you weren't here last week, and there's nothing, we're up against a wall if, you know, two more students move into a certain grade, and I don't know if, I feel comfortable going into signup season and continue enrollment season with nothing.
Agreed. So, just so I understand, so there are contingency positions that are contingent upon the source of funding, not the position themselves? So, like we would adopt the higher number, and then either it'll be funded from state aid or fund balance? So, the position is not contingent, the source of the funding is contingent? Like, am I understanding it correctly?
The position is contingent also on student enrollment. So, if the enrollment calls for an added section, or if the numbers break in a way that require us to open up another program, or whatever the case may be, within one of our schools, then we would need the money to do that currently, as presently constituted within the budget. In order for us to add another section, we would have to take those monies from another area of the budget, which we did for the additional third-grade section at Brookside. We took a fuel contingency, which is challenging, because it's hard to forecast the temperatures and the type of winter we'll have, but ultimately, we do want to prioritize the needs of our students above the fuel contingency. Should another position be needed, we would have to, without having a contingency position budgeted, we would need to look at other areas, but at this point, where our options are very limited in terms of finding monies elsewhere, because this has been such a tight budget. And one thing I will share that I think is important for the community to hear is that there are districts, many districts, and it's well-published, that are facing some serious reductions in their budgets. And through the careful financial management, fiscal management of this board, we have not been in, and we're not in that situation. And I thank the board, honestly, for your foresight and your governance, because we're in a position where we may not be able to add much for this coming school year, but we're able to retain the programs that we have. We're able to creatively reimagine some of the existing programs to add more newer and different opportunities to our students, for our students. But at this point, we don't have the room in the budget for any contingencies, so we would be foregoing something next school year, should we have to open up a section, without amending the budget.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, Ms. Semplebo, if the Hold Harmless provision that you mentioned goes through, what is the financial impact, what would that look like for us?
So, what I'm thinking is that in the governor's proposal, based on the formula she put forward, we were negative about $50,000 in foundation aid. So, I'm thinking with the Hold Harmless in place, we will at least be flat. So, positive $50,000 from where we were originally, right? So, that's how we were able to add that other section. We're thinking we're going to get at least the $50,000 there, and fuel contingency makes up the difference. So, is there the potential for us to get something more if they do decide to increase the inflation factor that she had reduced? I do think there's the potential for that. If the formula run ran fully, we would get another, I think, $160,000 on top of that. So, I think we're going to be somewhere between flat and 160, but I don't know where exactly we're going to land.
And Mike, in a perfect world, if the true Hold Harmless runs, where school districts are held harmless and that there's no reduction, and the automatic 3% increase, which was previously done year after year, that 3% could equate to upwards of $500,000. I don't anticipate that being the case, which is why I don't think the 3%, we haven't been talking much about the 3%, which was part of the Hold Harmless for many years. I just don't anticipate that we're going to go from minus $50,000 to plus $500,000. And as far as contingent teaching positions, how much would we need for each, for any that we were talking about?
So, generally, I think we're talking $100,000 per teacher.
So, can I ask a question? Because some of the things I've hearing from other districts is some of the problems that they've run into is constantly taking from fund balance and keeping their tax levy low. If we took another $200,000 from our fund balance, is that going to put us in any kind of a precarious situation in a future year?
I don't believe so. I think we, I think it's sustainable, I think it's something that we could accommodate for this year.
Go ahead.
Well, you're...
Marlena, Lisa has a question.
No, I just, just to follow up on Jackie's question, it wouldn't affect our credit rating if we were to do something like that?
No, I don't believe so. And it's, when you appropriate fund balance from, in the budget, that's always the absolute last thing, right? So, even though you may say in the budget, we're appropriating a million, two million, you may not actually need to dip into your fund balance depend, as the year goes through. You may recognize more revenues than you anticipated, so it's always, it's not the first thing you spend, it's the absolute last thing you spend. So, if we don't need to spend it, we won't spend it.
Got it, thank you. Mike, anybody else?
Well, I was just going to comment on your use of the word precarious. I don't think it would be precarious, but it does have some impact on our budgeting process next year as far as we have to start out with a deficit, right? So, there's some, there are some implications, nothing we can't probably overcome.
There are implications, right, because we would be, we're not, we're not using those funds for one-year, one-time things, right? We're assuming that if we hire somebody, we're going to need that staff going forward. So, there is out-year implications, but again, it's, I think at this point, it's something that is manageable for us to do.
And is two positions what you're thinking makes sense, Jackie or Ron? Truth is, it's the best estimate, and it's the most realistic estimate, because while I'd love to tell you, let's try for four, the reality is, number one, we anticipate that there will be one or two. So, we're not anticipating more than two, but I didn't anticipate 64 new students my first summer here either. So, based on the information that we have today, April 15th, we do believe that two positions is sufficient. Should that change, we'll obviously re-engage you in the discussion, but as of right now, we do believe that two contingency positions is sufficient.
And that 100,000, that's not their salary, that's the overall cost of having that employee?
That's all in, yeah, benefits and everything.
So, just another piece of this, because I do strongly believe we need the contingent positions, but if we don't need them and we don't use it, what will happen to that $200,000? We won't be spending it somewhere else, correct? Or we'll, you know?
That's not the plan, to spend it somewhere else. So, we just, again, we wouldn't tap into fund balance.
Right, it's just earmarked if, as a safety net, in case we have sections that grow too large.
Correct.
So, does that become the only thing we can spend the money on?
No, it won't be restricted, right? But I would think we would really have to get down to our, excuse me, our last $200,000 before, you know, we would spend that, which I don't, you know, on, before we would spend it on something else, right? So, I don't, I don't anticipate that being used for something else. We would really have to be down to the last dollar in our budget to use that for something else.
So, then, one last question then. So, say the two positions come up and they have to go in the K3 school, where are we putting those classes?
That's a whole nother conversation that we won't realize relief on until the additions are constructed. But I met with Mr. Cassarini, actually, this morning, and part of the conversation was talking about some of the space options. So, we'll continue to get creative in terms of the subdivision of additional classrooms to provide small group instruction. Mohansick still will face the reality that we shared with the community very publicly, of delivering some services in a hallway and keeping music on the stage. Brookside may be headed for the same fate with music on the stage. I hate to put that out there, but it's a reality, and we want to be transparent with our community. Space is an issue, so yes, we may have the enrollment that would warrant an additional class size, but space is certainly a consideration for us. So, the meetings are ongoing as, in terms of contingency plans for the contingency positions with regard to space. So, those meetings happened as recently as this morning.
So, I don't know how the board feels about adding the $200,000 to the budget in order to create this?
So, the proposal, just to clarify, the proposal is that we add two contingency positions to the budget that we've presented for a total of $200,000, and that initially are, without impacting the tax rate, we're going to cover that with fund balance. However, whatever monies we receive from the potentially increased state aid would go to offset that in our accounting.
I just want to clarify, Mike, on that. We've already assumed the first $50,000 of state aid, because all signs are pointing to a flat state aid number, not a $50,000 reduction. So, we've captured those monies in the Brookside position that I've already presented to you, in addition to the fuel contingency. The second point that I think is important that you mentioned, that I think is important to reiterate for everyone at home or who will watch this tomorrow and beyond, is that the tax rate that we anticipate does not change. That is a very, very important point to drive home, that the tax rate, regardless of whether we add in the contingency positions from fund balance, the tax rate in Yorktown remains at 2.07%, and that's what we estimate the tax rate to be as a result of this budget. The tax rate in Newcastle, we estimate to be at 2.95%, that will not change either. And the tax rate impact in Cortland is at 0.02%. And again, these numbers are not subject to change based on the action that you take this evening, should you choose to take that action.
Anybody? All right. No other questions or concerns about the budget? All right, so we are going to resolve that the annual school budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 in the amount of $119,110,000, 2024-2025 in the amount of $119,110,000, and the requisite portion thereof be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the district to be approved.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And just thank you to the administration for a very long, hard budget season, we appreciate it. A motion to approve the minutes of the March 25th and the April 8th meetings?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policies, a motion to approve the first reading and adoption of the following policies, 4321 Programs for Students with Disabilities under IDEA, 4531 Field Trips and Excursions, 4770 Graduation Requirements and Participations in Graduation Ceremonies, and 5150 Age of Attendance. A motion?
I'm moved. Second.
Cheryl, a lot of these we have redone. Can you just give an explanation, please?
Yes, actually, there are two different situations that we were looking at throughout these policies. One, for one, I think three out of the four, the four policies, the age of attendance has changed from '22 to '21. So we had to go through the policies where that was stated inaccurately at this point, since the state had announced that and changed that to '21. And the other one was field trips and excursions, and we wanted to review it another time just to take a look at transportation to field trips. So we made a few minor changes, and you're absolutely correct, that we had recently reviewed, I don't know, all four, but pretty much, I believe actually it may have been. So those were the little tweaks that we had to make to those.
Terrific.
I have a small question. So a few months ago, I think the state had put out or was considering modifying the graduation requirements. Did that go anywhere, or it just was chatter and that's that?
So nothing has changed from a policy standpoint? We'll continue to monitor, but you are absolutely correct that the state did put out a report from their Blue Ribbon Commission that they assembled to discuss graduation requirements, Regents exams, but nothing yet has materialized from those meetings. And we'll certainly continue to keep the board and the community apprised of that because that's something that certainly has garnered a lot of interest.
Thank you.
Follow up.
Anybody else? Okay. A motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel? Whereas employee number 5990 in their capacity as cleaner has not satisfactorily fulfilled their obligations during their probationary period, be it resolved that employee number 5990 be terminated effective close of business on April 16, 2024 pursuant to Westchester County Civil Service Rules and paid in lieu of notice for the period from April 9th to April 16, 2024.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have under certified personnel appointments, part-time appointments, additions to the substitute list, a removal from the substitute list, and some resignations for purpose of retirement, and additional resignations under classified personnel. We have civil service appointment and an addition to the substitute list.
I'm moved. Second.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
I see Mr. Rosen back on the list, and I'm wondering what that's about.
So we had a resignation in the department during the height of annual review season. So the PPS office, in order to continue with more efficient operations, needs to fill that position. It's administrative position, and we need to fill it on a temporary basis, given the short notice that we have on the resignation. And Mr. Rosen is looking to get back, he can't wait to come back to Yorktown, so we'll hire Mr. Rosen on a per diem basis for a maximum of 30 days to just get us through the end of this school year with chairing meetings to ensure that all students have had their annual review meeting and have an appropriate placement for the coming school year. We'll post the position this spring for a probationary vacancy beginning July 1st.
And how does that work with his pension?
So the waiver was suspended for the '23-'24 school year, so New York State does have a waiver in place for income while in retirement and collecting benefits under the New York State Teacher Retirement System. However, that cap has been suspended for this school year. There is no indication if that cap will be suspended for the '24-'25 school year. That was decided actually in June of last year for the upcoming school year, so we may hear more about that. But irrespective of the decision to extend the cap to the '24-'25 school year, we're still going to go out and hire and post and hire someone for the position on a probationary full-time basis.
I'm happy to have him back.
Yes. Then we're happy to have him back.
That was, you were a good mic, okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Property Tax Report Court. Whereas the New York State educational law requires that the district prepare, approve, and make publicly available the 2024-25 Property Tax Report Court, therefore resolve that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District approves the 2024-25 Property Tax Report Court and authorizes superintendent to publish it in accordance with the law.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to accept the transportation contract bid award to, was it First Student?
Some move.
Second.
Second, and discussion.
Go ahead.
Dr. Hatter, could you give us just like any, like a summary of what's changed, if anything?
So we had to go out and rebid the contract as a result of the expiration of the previous contract. It's been quite some time since we have rebid this contract, so we are realizing a approximately $500,000 increase for the coming school year for transportation costs. With regard to some of the parameters of the contract, not much has changed in that regard. However, we have been able to negotiate some differentiated pricing between the vans and the larger buses. We have been able to successfully negotiate cameras on the buses to assist us in ensuring that students are safe on the bus and that the code of conduct is being adhered to on the bus. For the most part, the remaining provisions of the contract are intact. It's a five-year agreement, Lisa, I believe it is. So it's a five-year agreement that will provide us some stability with options to renew as we move on. But not much has changed. There will be some consistency for anyone at home who's looking at First Student says, well, wait a minute, I thought they had total transportation. Total transportation was purchased by First Student, so the beauty of this contract is we'll get to retain our bus drivers who know our children, who know the routes, the dispatchers who know the streets of Yorktown and know the roads quite well, the staff who maintain the buses. We are getting some newer buses as a result, so it's a really good contract, especially in light of the quotes that other districts in our immediate area have received. When they've gone out to bid, we've seen increases upwards of millions of dollars in transportation, and we're fortunate to have relationships with First Student that they gave us a bid that was quite aggressive and quite sensitive to the fiscal restraints that we have in this year's budget. So a $500,000 increase is certainly a lot of money. In comparison to where other transportation bids have come in, we view it quite fair.
Right, and does this also, well, thank you, thank you for that. And does this incorporate the BOSIs, the bus route, and the, like, all that, or is that in the future?
Yeah, this is home-to-school, it's field trips, it's school trips, it'll incorporate the buses during the day for the BOSIs, the three trips that we make. This is all encompassing with the exception of some of the chartered coach buses for the longer trips that we have. Other than that, Lisa, is there anything else that we're adding? Yep. And some is transportation as well for our ASY program.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I have a, one follow-up question regarding the cameras on the bus. So they're responsible for them, how do we know that they're going to be working? Because quite frequently you hear, well, there's a camera on the bus, but oh, it wasn't working. So how will we know that the buses are all have working cameras?
So I think before, before the start of the school year, they will have to be replacing all the cameras, because the cameras that are on the bus right now are our cameras. So we will have to remove those, and they will have to replace them with their own cameras. And we will ask them when they do their dry runs to verify that all their cameras are working and provide us with documentation that they've tested their cameras and that they're working.
Just in the beginning of the year, but what about as the school year goes on?
And we can put in checkpoints. The reality is, the, with the 71 bus fleet, four cameras on a bus, there will be cameras that go down. So I wouldn't ever convey to you in good conscience and good faith that every bus and every camera will be operating every day of the school year. There will be realities. I think for us, the greater concern is how, the response to the down cameras. So yes, we will have checks, and we'll make those periodic checks, whether they're monthly or otherwise, we'll certainly do that. But there will be a possibility that cameras will be down, and it's a great source of frustration for all of us because it's, it's an important component, and we've grown accustomed to having cameras on the buses. A lot of it will be governed by the response to correcting the cameras. What is the downtime? How long does it take to make a repair? How is their communication with us? Are they able to sub out, swap out a camera in the interim, or swap out a bus with working cameras? Those are the conversations that Patty Sauber, that Lisa and I certainly will be having with their management.
Okay.
May I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Lisa. So did BOSIs have a consultant that was looking at our bus routes to see if it could be more optimized? And did they, did they come back, or is that still in progress?
So it wasn't BOSIs, it was TAS?
Oh, yes.
Right, so I've received a draft.
Okay.
We're going through the draft. I expect to get that back shortly from them, but it is in process.
Awesome, thank you.
Who, who owns the footage that comes from the bus, and who has access to view that footage?
Well, the footage is ours. You can speak to it, Lisa, but the footage is ours.
Right, the footage is ours. I believe the only people who would have access are the people at the bus company, and they will send us the footage. I don't believe that anybody in the district will have access directly unless we share it with other people in the district.
Is it, would it be restricted at the bus company as to who's viewing the footage?
Yes.
I would imagine people are concerned that somebody's watching their children on the bus.
Right. Understandably, that, and I don't even know that they would necessarily be viewing the footage. We would ask them to please give us the tape or the video from a certain bus, and we view the footage. We don't ask them to look for anything or to identify anything, we just ask them to provide us with the footage, and then it's the district that does the review of the footage.
Okay, thank you.
And there are all kinds of safeguards in place to ensure FERPA and IT Law 2D are accounted for, and those safeguards include password protection and the way the videos transmit to us. So yes, it's a very valid concern. It's a concern that we've discussed in terms of who has access to this, because potentially you're transmitting a student disciplinary record through two people who don't work for the district, which is something that would be a direct violation of FERPA. So we're certainly cognizant of that, working with legal counsel to ensure that we have appropriate safeguards and passwords in place to limit access.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the attached agreement from ARAS Contracting for the 2024 Capital Bond Project?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the following contract for Health and Welfare Services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the '23-'24 school year, and this is for Scarsdale?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the following Yorktown High School Overnight Field Trip for the ISIF 2024 in Los Angeles, California, May 11th to May 18th.
I'm moved.
Second.
Discussion, we had a student get to ISIF.
We did. Congratulations to Eric Song. His science research project is absolutely incredible, so he'll be out in California to represent Yorktown at ISIF, which is just one of the premier events in the science research community. We just could not be prouder of this accomplishment and of the science research program as a whole. At, whether it was WESF, our students performed incredibly well, with over 80% of our students being recognized with awards, or if it was at NICEF, where Eric qualified. So just a terrific accomplishment. We're so proud and happy that he'll be representing us at one of the premier science research events in the country.
Terrific.
Yes, it's amazing, and congratulations. It's a week?
The competition itself is about five days or so, or four days or so, I believe it's four or five days, is between the travel and the presentations and some of the seminars that they have. It does span, I want to say it's about five days or so, six days.
Is that in compliance with our policy about field trips?
Yes, so that was part of the reason why the policy was amended to represent, this is part of the instructional program that we have here. This is a direct, what we refer to as a field trip rather than an excursion. So it's, rather than something supplemental to the instructional program going on for five days, we wouldn't allow that by policy. So an excursion, which is essentially an athletic trip, it's the cheer trip that we don't sponsor to Florida, it's an athletic team, it's a band team, band ensemble going out, that's more of an excursion, that would be limited. This is referred to as a field trip because it is integral to the curriculum, and it's a big part of the curriculum. He's presenting essentially his work that he's worked on as part of the course, so this is something that by policy would be permitted.
Okay, I wasn't trying to be Debbie Downer, just making sure. We're good, I think it's amazing.
I had the same thought.
For ISIF, they have these, I think they have a day, half-day for setup, and then they have different judging days by different judges, so it makes it just a little bit longer than a typical, the day trips that they do here for WESF and ISIF.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then a motion to approve the following budget transfer that's listed below.
Some move.
This was for the, it's here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special Ed, a motion to arrange the following placements as of April 15, 2024.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to attend, amend the pupil personnel services plan for the '23-'24 school year. Is it the '23-'24, yeah, school year, okay.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, this is also related back to the state ed change.
Graduation, yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gift grants and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gift grants and donations. At Crumpon School, $300 for supplies for the Living History Week from the Crumpon PTA.
I'm moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Up to board comments. Pete?
No, just thank you again for another wonderful, good news. And then just also, Dr. Hatter and your team for a very difficult budget season, but a very good budget season. So thank you for all the hard work on that.
Catalina?
I just want to say, yesterday, I attended the Middle States Dinner, and it was amazing from our students that played for us, from orchestra to, I had students leading me through the high school, and they were just so articulate and just showed so much pride in what they do, and the love of the teachers and all the innovations that they're able to do. And they talked a lot about it coming from them, not just from the teachers, so. And today's good news, I mean, it was amazing, and just the partnership, like you said, because it was not only the resource officer, but the teachers really including him in every day. So it was very nice.
Mike?
Yeah, great meeting. Obviously starts with our students who were just fantastic tonight. That was really a lot of fun. I caught myself laughing and just smiling so much throughout that whole presentation. But the community came out as well, obviously the members of our police department, who we have a great partnership with, as mentioned, and that we rely on. And I think, you know, thanks to Dr. Hatter and his team for putting together a very, very difficult budget. But I also want to commend this board, because there were parts of this that were uncomfortable, and there were some hard decisions that we had to make, and I think tonight, we came together and, in my mind at least, fixed one of the problems, which was the lack of contingency positions in the budget. And so I think that was a very impactful thing to do, so thank you all for that.
Rashman?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hatter and Deirdre and Lisa, for your leadership. It's difficult, it's difficult when state aid is limited. Clearly, it's an inflationary environment, and there are competing priorities. And I think the one thing, Dr. Hatter, you've shown us every year, is that staying status quo is not good enough. We have grown every year and provided with best for our students, so thank you for keeping that always in the, you know, forefront of every decision we make. Great evening by our students, and welcome to our scouts. Please join us more often. The latter part of the meeting is not as fun as the good news part of the meeting, but as you can see, we really like company, so please join us more often, and all the best to you.
Cheryl?
We started out with not good news, but great news, and that was an example how, of how our budget decisions last year came to fruition this year, so I have every bit of confidence that our budget this year will lead the way for next year, although it's a very tight budget, but we really have to thank our superintendent and our super, assistant superintendents, as well as our staff and our administrators who really come together and work out our needs and, and what's going to be able to be incorporated into every year's budget, so thank you for your leadership as we went through that process.
Lisa?
Yeah, ditto, but also I wanna echo what Mike said, I, I don't think it can be said enough how much this board works together. We don't always agree, but we're always respectful of each other's opinions, and because of that, under the, the leadership and guidance of Dr. Hatter and Ms. Amerling and Ms. Sanfilippo, we're able to come to what we believe to be the best outcome for our community, so I echo what Mike said, thank you to my fellow board members for all of that.
Yeah, I, I agree, and good news, of course, was fantastic, it was about the cutest thing you're gonna see, and we do value, we really, really do value our partnerships with the rest of the community, and I think that that shows how much we value it, and that he could be assimilated so quickly, Officer David could be assimilated so quickly into the fabric of Mohansik, which you know is a tight community, is just a testament to how well everybody works together there, so that was amazing. Thank you again for the budget, and then I just wanna share a Middle States story, because I was at the dinner last night too, and I keep singing the praises of these kids, but today Mrs. Amerling and I were at the Middle States meeting where you met, we met with the director and one of the other Middle States accreditors, and they went around the room for the entire committee, and by the time she asked each person to give about a thirty-second spiel about what they felt about the committee, and then the kids went around, and there's like twelve kids on the committee, by the time the kids finished, every adult was crying in the room. I mean, Merrill, Merrill could not even continue speaking, it was, but that's the amazement of these kids, and, and the way they were able to articulate things that they knew, we're not gonna be here for it, but we know we were able to help fix this for somebody else. It was just, I don't know if you wanna speak to it, it was unbelievable to, to hear them, they were just amazing.
I think that was probably one of the most powerful parts of the meeting, was to hear the students speak, but also the reverse of that was for the teachers to say how the, the whole process was so beneficial because there was so many student voices there, and that the talk of having these committees and moving forward, that we don't need to wait for Middle States to be able to hear our student voices and to empower them to impart some change in the school, that we need to do that more regularly, and the, the tears in the room, it became contagious, so it went around, but it was just really an unbelievable day, and it's a, it's a wonderful team to work with that came to visit us, but the students really, it's my first Middle States Committee, and it was, really was the students that make it.
This is by and far the best Middle States Committee, and Merrill said it was because the students almost had an equal voice, or almost as many students as there were adults in the room, and so they felt a powerful voice, and it was wonderful to hear, it really was amazing. So Ron, Lisa, anything else to add? No? Can I have a motion to adj, oh, public comment, anybody? No? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good night, everyone.